Good. Nancy, Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Could you call the role, please?
I would love to.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Eggenberger, here. Commissioner Foster.
Here, good evening.
Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zuber. I am here, thank you. And let the record reflect that we have Patrick Sloan and Erin Schluter here from the Planning Department. And I apologize because I watched the beginning of last month's meeting and I said Schluter. That is actually a product that I specify, so I apologize. It's a nice edge for tile, in case you're curious.
At least it's nice.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good thing. I have it in my own bathroom, so.
My name has been butchered in many worse ways, so no offense taken.
I was like, how did I get that so wrong? So, my apologies. Anyway, thank you very much, everyone. And we're going to start with the acceptance of the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Removed.
Unless there's anything late-breaking, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that was my fault. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? There is nothing new to add, correct, Patrick? Okay, thank you. Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. Do you have any communications that we should know about, Patrick?
Nothing beyond what's in the packet.
All right, very good. And we have a public comment section coming up, so would anyone like to make any kind of public statements? I assume you're both here for the township facility.
Many times, people like to get up here and just talk about how much they love the people on the Planning Commission.
Oh, you're right.
So, just an FYI.
When did that happen? That must have happened before I was on the commission.
I think you've been on the commission longer than Commissioner Eggenberger, so I don't know. I think maybe that was in a dream that you had.
I'd just like to give it as an opportunity.
Okay, well, that's very kind of you to think of. Yes, thank you. Yeah, so feel free. I mean, you know, the microphone's yours if you gentlemen want to say anything nice about the Planning Commission. Hearing no public comment, we will move right along. We have no public hearings this evening. We have no old business, but we do have some new business. We have the item number 136-SPX-8297, which is the Canton Public Works Storage Building. We are considering site plan for the parcel number 136-99-0018-702 at 4847 Sheldon Road. The property is located on the east side of Sheldon Road between Michigan Ave. and Van Born Road. Proposed use is a new construction of a storage building. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure, thank you. The Public Works Division currently has its site on the east side of Sheldon Road, south of Michigan Avenue, at 4847 Sheldon Road. And the Public Works site includes the main building that has the administrative offices and storage, as well as an existing detached storage building that will remain, and also outdoor storage. At this time, the Public Works Division proposes to construct a storage building that's 128 feet wide by 75 feet, four inches deep, for indoor storage. The Public Works Division is responsible for the operation and maintenance of essential services in Canton, which include public water and sanitary sewer services. And the proposed building will protect and shelter the equipment that's necessary to provide these services to the community. We've reviewed the proposed building in accordance with the requirements and standards of the zoning ordinance, and we find that the building meets all the zoning ordinance standards, with the exception of a few follow-up questions that we have for the contractors that they're currently working on. And so, we have in our recommendation approval with conditions subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including those township requirements that are noted in our letter, notably for building design and materials. Also, at the same time, our Engineering Division and our Fire Department have also reviewed the plans, and they're working with the applicants and the contractors to address any of their concerns as well. So, requirements of the Engineering Division, the Fire Department, and the Building Division are also included with the recommended motion subject to any township requirements. So, with that, that concludes our staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Project sponsor, would you guys like to make any additional comments or tell us more about it? No? Okay, okay.
Or anything else you want to share?
I mean, you could tell us how great we are.
It's kind of a slow meeting.
Please tell us your name.
So, we'll start there, right? But I'm John Selmey, I'm the Public Works Manager. In the last couple of years, we've been upgrading our equipment. And this project has been out there before I got here. I've been here for about three years. Back in 18, they started the process, and just for whatever reason, COVID and changeover of staff and things of that nature. So, again, so we bought a lot of new equipment, and we want to, you know, the township has spent a lot of dollars on it, and we want to preserve it because, you know, we're not buying half-million-dollar trucks every couple of years, you know? So, and we were running out of space. There is enough space there for us to do what we want to do with all this equipment, and prefer to have it all stored inside. And, you know, right now, currently, we have a bunch of equipment that's stored outside, so. That's the long and short, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I do have one, I think I figured it out, but I was really studying the site plan because it's such a small piece of the actual site. The proposed building is going just to the west of that existing building where those concrete separation areas are, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. It took me a while.
We already have some cold storage buildings there.
Yeah.
And this one's not going to be connected to that. It'll be offset, I don't know, 20, 30 feet. And it has, we have two roll-up doors, so we can access it from there. And then all the roll-up doors in the front facing, so.
Thank you. Okay, great. Does the Commission have any questions or comments or thoughts or feedback? I'll just leave it open. Commissioner Cruz, you look like you might want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I noticed there's a pump station for the sanitary. Just one thing I found out, it's almost an afterthought of where the control panel will be located. Sometimes in the building, so it really doesn't. But it's good to talk with your designer on where you want it.
And that's my, some of the minor comments that our Engineering had. So, we may look at maybe not using a pump because it's only an inch and a half because there's going to be one bathroom in there, so, you know, most likely it'll be inside the building for sure, so. And one thing, other thing I failed to mention, too, is there's a lot of concrete in there that we're going to replace also on top of the, once the building is done, because it all is, you know, it's useful life. And then where the existing buildings are, the grades are all wrong, and it back pitches into the building, so we're going to fix all that, put new concrete there, too, so clean that all up, you know? And all our stormwater outlet to the existing stormwater ponds.
Count it 12.
That's a typical.
Got it. Yeah, I saw those at the end. Have anything?
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the site plan for the Canton Township Public Works Storage Building at 4847 Sheldon Road on tax parcel 136-99-0018-702, subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Second. Awesome, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes, now that you've got my name right.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, very good. Motion carries, so.
That's what we're waiting for. Adjourn. And on a good note.
Thank you. We love the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, thank you, take care.
All right, awesome. Very good. Our next agenda item is the, and Erin, I apologize, we kind of cut you short there. No one's going to say anything?
We're just going to say anything?
We're going to be engaged.
Be engaged, yes.
Yeah, so my apologies.
So, thank you. Yep, so tonight's main event is going to be the master plan discussion, so we've got a number of things that are up for discussion. First and foremost, I would like to go over a couple of the things we did last time, specifically the future land use specialty planning areas. Now, we went through these individually. I'll go through them very careful, or very quickly, in case there's any follow-up questions, points, discussion items you would like to throw into the mix, and certainly for those who were unable to attend last time. I'm not going to go through all of the documents that we discussed last time, just these future specialty planning areas to make sure that this area is covered and we've incorporated any additional comments. From there, we'll continue on to the mixed-use neighborhood nodes discussion, which we weren't able to have last time. And then, the three items that are new to you for discussion this evening is text on the history of Canton, natural features, and past planning efforts. So, these are kind of the five chapters that we're going to be discussing in depth this evening. Well, first, we're talking about the future land use. So, as you know, as part of the master planning efforts, we have identified an innovation boundary along Michigan Avenue. And this is the same area that would be identified as the main or the Michigan Avenue Innovation Network. As I mentioned last time, we've specifically avoided using, calling anything "the main" on the future land use map, just in case there are any kind of hiccups with that initiative right there. We want to continue with this innovation boundary, but if something happens with the main and it doesn't come to fruition, we still have built into our master plan this innovation network that we want to promote. So, we have these five areas, which we've discussed before. So, the presentation's a little bit different. Same stuff, just different pictures and a little bit more detail from our discussion. So, this first area is Research Drive, okay? So, it's a curvilinear cul-de-sac on the south side of Michigan Avenue near Beck. There's one property in that cul-de-sac that is owned by Canton Township, which is why this area was identified for the specialty planning area. I have included the future land use, current future land use designation, as well as a zoning district on here, and the future land use that we're proposing, which is to be light industrial. So, as part of this discussion, we had identified some of the existing uses that were in on Research Drive, the warehousing, specialty food production, indoor recreation, automotive repair, research, technology, and consulting. Now, all of those are permitted in the light industrial district. So, some of the potential uses that we identified that could be used in some of these vacant properties, specifically the one that's outlined in blue, the two spec buildings that are outlined in pink, and then the area that's outlined in yellow, that is the Canton property. Could be indoor recreation, research, technology, warehousing, or others. Now, these are the same ideas that we had talked about last time. Is there any other ideas or thoughts for this area in particular? We had identified indoor recreation because the thought was if there was opportunities to connect to the Arctic Edge or the Softball Center immediately to the east, which is why this aerial shows that in such prominence, these would be the two areas that would be ideal for those types of uses and those types of connections.
Erin, I can't remember if I said this at the last meeting or not, and it doesn't necessarily pertain to this specific piece of property, but one of the potential uses along this corridor, and I guess it would fall into the category of high technology, but maybe this specific use goes more to economic development. But data centers are becoming a very important need. The growth of the need for data centers across the country is huge. And up until now, the expansion of data centers has been really largely focused in a lot of key areas around the country, like Northern Virginia, Texas, the Chicago area, California, of course. But I recently read where there's a movement to start locating more in the upper Midwest because of cheaper real estate, first of all, and also more, better, more availability of water and power grid. Obviously, California has its issues, and we have our issues, too, but as we talk about power as these developments come along. But it's something we definitely take advantage of, especially if the desire is to develop Michigan Avenue as a quote-unquote tech corridor or whatever, that would be something that would draw other high-tech uses, too, so. I guess put that in your list of things of.
I was just going to ask that same question.
About, well, so you may recall last meeting, I was asking how big this piece of property was, how big that piece of property was. Minimum probably about 20 acres. So, but the key attributes are, again, the availability of water because they use water for cooling, and substantial power supply. Now, obviously, we have a DTE corridor that goes right through the township here, so you would have to work some kind of a partnership with DTE to beef up our power grid and that sort of thing. But it wouldn't be terribly difficult, given that it sounds like DTE has plans to do more with Fermi and that sort of thing, so. But it's definitely something to keep in mind. And I've talked to people who develop these, and initially, the thought was they'd like to do something in Detroit, but they're open to going anywhere where, again, where there's space and there's, again, water and power, so.
Okay. I mean, if the minimum acreage is something we would have to look into.
Right.
Certainly, I mean, if there's smaller data centers that could be located, I mean, these properties are a little on the smaller side for those types of things. But we do have area on the east side, which is area number five, that could be well-suited for something like that. So, it's something that we'll definitely include, but also being aware that the acreage will be, could be a constraint.
Right, and that's why I said this is something more to keep in mind for the entire corridor versus a specific property. And, you know, maybe you have to group a bunch of parcels together or whatever with other owners or whatever, so, but something to keep in mind.
Yeah, it's not outside the realm of possibility, and this is where we were, we would say we would want those types of uses here. Again, these five areas, excuse me, are acting as sort of an economic development tool as well, promotional tool for our Economic Development Manager and our team to go out and try to promote these properties and these types of uses along the main corridor. So, it's not just a developer coming in and saying, "I want to do this because your master plan says it." We are actively going out and trying to find those businesses, those entrepreneurs, those people who want to establish here in Canton. So, it is an active attraction, for sure. Excuse me. Yes. I mean, it's possible. I mean, any number of things could work in that front. We've chosen a lot of these specialty planning areas that also have township-owned properties on it, so that way, there is opportunities for public-private partnerships. You know, we own part of the Arctic Edge and the Softball Center there, so if it is identified through our Leisure Services Division Department that more space is needed for connections, for off-street parking, for things like that, not saying I want this to be just a parking lot by any stretch, but if there's an identified need in this area by owning that property, it gives us a little bit more leverage on what we can do to help out that adjacent use, and certainly trying to make this area with the established Arctic Edge and the, what's there, there in the corner? The indoor.
The restaurant?
No, 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 it's one of the indoor recreations.
High Velocity.
High Velocity, thank you. So, having all of those there kind of makes this like an indoor recreation center within the community. So, building off that and making this area specific to that type of use will bring people in as well.
Anything else?
Anything else with area number one? And if you think of something later on, I mean, you're going to see this text again as it comes, as it's formatted and it comes back. And so, if you see something later on that you want to discuss in more depth, please feel free to reach out to me anytime, or we can discuss it at a public meeting. Either one is, all right. Excuse me. Area number two is comprised of several, several properties. So, you'll see in the upper left-hand corner, that's the existing future land use with mixed use, light industrial. The green area here, just to the south, is the DPW building. It's also identified on the proposed future land use map here. And then we have the aerial, which, again, outlined in yellow, are all the Canton Township-owned properties. So, this Die Brothers subdivision is a residential subdivision that Canton Township has purchased a lot of properties over the years. And with being a major owner in this area, we want to look at what could we do with these properties? You know, we're purchasing a lot of them. There's a lot of them that are grouped in entire neighborhoods here. What could be done with this area? So, just kind of separating them into their two areas. So, the Die Brothers, the existing, is the single-family residential. A lot of those properties are vacant, so it's not like they're all occupied and have single-family houses on them. A lot of them are vacant properties. But what could we do with those types of, with this area? With some commercial fronting on Michigan Avenue, there's potential for a mixed-use development with some residential behind, potentially, or continuing on with the high-tech research industrial-type spaces? If all of these areas, all of these properties were to be combined, this could be a large project area for a data center if that were to be of interest to a future developer. But these are the kind of things we're thinking of, how we could integrate into making this area part of the main, even though it's a little bit further put back from the main, but still being part of the active corridor. So, specific to this residential neighborhood here, is there anything on these potential uses that you'd like to see or anything you'd like to discuss in more detail?
Well, getting along the mixed-use idea, if Michigan Avenue gets developed the way that some people are envisioning it, through high-tech, or, I could see some sort of a residential component that's quote-unquote affordable. And I hate using that word because I know how people think of affordable, but something where, like, young professionals who are just starting their careers might live in a place like that, like a loft-type apartment or something that's cool, I guess is what I'd call, for lack of a better term.
Kind of like what they were going to do with, when Pulte was going to develop the place behind Home Depot?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's going to be a mixed-use.
Yeah, so something like that. So, that's what I could see as a mixed-use type thing.
Yeah, and being so close to Michigan Avenue right there, if there's opportunities in the future for rail or shuttle or bus connections, that would be ideally suited for some sort of mixed-use residential component.
Yep.
Excuse me, I'm very sorry.
Yeah, then maybe that dovetails a little bit, too, into your, some aspect of your node discussion, if you had a residential component there.
Anything else with number two? Or with just this single-family residential park? Okay. There are some, there's not any, I don't know of any houses that are directly on Michigan Avenue with their driveways abutting it, but there are some residential areas like these where they have their access drives to Michigan Avenue. Redwood is, I'm going to be on the north side of Michigan Avenue. That one is forthcoming, but that will have some commercial along Michigan Avenue with the residential behind it. There are some other historical areas, but I don't know where they all are off the top of my head.
Mobile Home Park.
Sorry?
Mobile Home Park.
Yes, the Mobile Home Park, yeah. Okay. So, the other two areas within area number two are located, one of them is just north of the DPW building, and then the other one is located just south of the Die Brothers. They're outlined here in yellow. Again, both owned by the township. Both of them are currently vacant. However, the large square property is currently being used for soil storage by the Sauk Trail Hills Landfill. So, we have an agreement with that entity to be able to use the property. I did contact our DPW supervisor about any future expansions. As you just saw today, they're doing an outbuilding on their property, so they keep needing more space, more storage. So, the idea of an expansion is not outside the realm of possibility, but it's not anything that's on the forefront of projects at this time. Keeping those areas available for those in case we do need it in the future. Anything else you would like to?
But you said part of the idea of designating these five particular areas is using it as a tool for economic development.
Mm-hmm.
If that parcel north of the DPW facility, they kind of want to hold on to that, should we be actively marketing that as, and I, again, maybe I'm using the wrong terminology, but.
Well, I guess, I'm sorry, I mean.
But if, say, economic development does get somebody that's interested, and DPW wants to, we might want to expand, whatever, I mean, it's just, I'd hate to see it get, you know, who, I guess it comes down to weighing what the options are versus benefit and risk kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's on the top, you know, number-one priority of what we would like. However, with close proximity right there to Sheldon Road and access right to Sheldon, if that Die Brothers, say, the Die Brothers subdivision was purchased and it was going to be this big behemoth, you know, high-tech corridor with mixed use, in addition to having access to Michigan Avenue, you'd also want access to Sheldon. So, by having that area there as a potential piece, it does show that there's connectivity opportunities in the future, if someone were to do that.
But you're saying hang on to it for other purposes than actual development?
I mean, it could be part of a larger overall development, but, yeah, I don't think just marketing that piece for something would be exactly what we would want to do. We'd want to see it as part of a larger scope.
Good point.
But it's owned by the township, so we wanted to study these areas in more depth as well. Okay, anything else with area number two? Looking along, okay. Area number three, as I mentioned last time, is a little different because this one, the property's bisacked Michigan Avenue. So, we have the area to the north, which is the Singh Executive Park, where they have a lot of, you see the outbuildings have already have their footprints mapped. The future land use has identified that as mixed use, and the zoning has C3 where that Star Building is, LIR, and GI to the south, so. We have these two areas, and you'll see the aerial there with the entire property. So, looking at this area, as I mentioned before, we have these five buildings around the northeast and west perimeter of Executive Drive here. Those have already been built. They have indoor recreation, training, office, manufacturing. And then we have these two buildings in the center here, which are currently vacant. Now, these two areas have already been approved for buildings, but their site plans haven't been approved. So, in theory, something could go here, but they still have to go through site plan review. So, the potential uses for this area could be some more research, high-tech, light industrial. Are there any other uses that could be considered here in this area on the north side of Michigan Avenue? No, we're good with those? Okay. On the south side here, we have, there's four properties, three of which are owned by Canton Township. The one on the far right here is slated to be Fire Station Number Four, so that's something that you've already seen. The rest of these are vacant, one of which is owned by a private owner, but the other three are owned by the township. So, potential uses for this area are large mixed-use projects, some incubator spaces, and some other research and high-tech.
So, looking at those two, Erin.
Yeah.
Large mixed-use projects and incubator space, those could probably also be considered on the piece across Michigan Avenue, too, at least incubator spaces, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where we just talked about.
The mixed-use area, that could be incubator two.
Incubator spaces in number two? Okay. Anything else with area number three? Area number four is the fun one. This is the landfill. So I go into great detail in the text on the, the current use and how landfills are used and the environmental impacts and things like that. So I'm not gonna regurgitate that here. But when we look at this, we have the current future land use is general industrial, the zoning is in general industrial, and then we have it identified on the future land use map specifically as the landfill. When we look at this, the existing use is the trail or the, the landfill itself. Potential uses could be a solar panel farm, open passive park space, golf course, active outdoor recreation, drone park. I've included golf course here because that is a, a use that has been known to have been used in other landfills across the United States, once the landfill has been capped. However, I don't necessarily think that that is something that would work in this space only because we have the Fellows Creek Golf Course that's located really close by, and we certainly wouldn't want to encourage something that would be in conflict with one of our own properties. So unless Fellows Creek were to, to close and, and this one could be developed and that could be, you know, unless it was something, one of those, but it's on here just as a, an idea of what could be done on those properties and what other communities have done on their capped landfills. As I note in the text, one thing to be considerate of is how the landfills have to be capped and how they have to be monitored for at least 30 years, no trees. So that is, that is a big point that we need to make sure that are, are taken care of now. Our planning staff has been looking at some genetically modified trees, poplars, that might be permitted there because they don't have deep root systems, they kind of spread out like that on the surface. But it's something we'll have to look at and do, do more research on. But overall, all the research I've done say, number one, no trees.
Realistically, probably the best one on that list is open passive park space. I mean, you can talk about the drone park, but that's probably gonna have a somewhat limited audience. As opposed to just a, a traditional park.
I mean, and the drone park can go hand-in-hand with the open passive because it's just open space for them to go. The, the, the benefits of doing or establishing a drone park here is for people in the area who want them and for people who are concerned about them being in public parks, like Heritage Park backs up to a lot of residential areas. And it makes a lot of people nervous to see the drones flying over. So having something established here where you're more than a thousand feet away from the nearest residential could be.
If the two uses could coexist.
Sure, oh yeah.
That's fine. I'm just thinking, if you end up developing Michigan Avenue with some mixed use, with residential, even high-tech uses, we probably need to have more recreation area down there. And I, and I mean more than just Sky Zone. So, you know, something that's free.
Your recreation zone.
The solar panel farm, I like the idea, but I think you brought up next time, last time is, you get into the, all the construction issues and about going down into the ground with what.
Yeah. Solar panel farms have been done elsewhere. A lot of other landfills in the area have, have done them and, and have been wildly successful. Obviously, I've never done one myself, so, no, 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 not, not on my, no, not on my afternoons. Yes. Right. It, they would have to be strategically placed to make sure they could maximize their, their efficiency. But that would be something that, once we got to that point, we would then be able to consult with the professionals and the experts on this.
Cherry Hill.
I don't know that.
Yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of considerations that would have to go into. Looking at this, this isn't something that's going to be happening tomorrow. In the text that was written, you know, the, the capped landfill probably has another 10 to 15 years. But that could be extended, just depending on the compaction and how things are, are stored there and whatnot. So we're kind of estimating. The point of this exercise is to look at these areas and say, what would, what could work here? What would we like to do? This way, we can be proactive in how we can work with the, the landfill owners and the entities as opposed to being reactionary once it's closed and saying, oh no, what are we gonna do? We can think and, and kind of navigate some, some new and innovative ideas and there might be something that comes there that, that we don't have on this list yet. But this just gives us an idea and a direction of starting to move forward.
I'm sure your mic is on, Gordy, because if, if it's not on, you, we can't hear you on the recording at all.
Okay. So the concern is in 15 years? You just want to put this there as a record for the next person that does a master plan, whatever, seven years is?
Yeah. It's a, it's a place to start, and it's, it's conversations that we're starting to have. So part of this is also looking at, are there private partnerships? Are there grant opportunities to study the landfill? Other opportunities that could exist that the, the master plan can be the, the foundation or the springboard for. So including this allows us to start those conversations and work with those agencies to, to get an idea of what could work there. We may look at and start doing some research and start doing some analysis and realize the solar panel farm won't work there because of X, Y, Z, D. So what else could work? Okay, we know trees won't work. Okay, what else could work? And it just gives us an opportunity to start looking in directions to, to, to what could work. And if there are granting, grant funding opportunities to, to do this, then we've, we're already ahead of the game on that front.
Related to this, do we need to be concerned about future landfill space in Canton?
Yeah. I mean, that would be something that we would have to, to be considerate, be concerned about and figuring out if there's something that we need to do elsewhere. There's another capped landfill that's east of I-275. So once these are capped, where is all this refuse gonna go? There's not a whole lot more, more land in, in Canton, so logically, there might have to go somewhere else.
Okay.
Just looking at some of the, the maps and, and things like that, Wayne County has quite a few landfills. Oakland County has, I think, three. So.
We'll send our trash to them.
Yeah. I like it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
But, but north, because I'm, I'm in the south, so north, Oakland County, yeah.
This piqued my interest now. What, so are, is this all Canton landfill?
This is Canton landfill, yeah.
Meaning only Canton? No.
No, 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 no. It's, it's, it's owned, it's owned and operated in Canton, but it does take the refuse from other municipalities.
Including Canada.
Yeah. I was gonna say it's international.
They're getting paid for that, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else with area number five? Or four? Okay. So area number five is the only, is the last area here, and it's the only one that's been identified on the east side of 275. Specifically, we've talked about this before, including a lot of planning efforts with this master plan for areas on the east side of 275 because historically and during our public engagement, a lot of people who live on the east side feel like that area, it, isn't part of Canton. So we wanted to make sure that when we, when we talk about initiatives, when we talk about things, that we do include and plan for the east side as well. So this is the area on South Lots from Michigan Avenue south to Van Born. Some of the commercial areas that are immediately adjacent Michigan Avenue are not selected for this because they've already been developed. But we're looking at these many acres of property. It's about 70 acres, about 13 parcels here for, for possible development. So existing future land use is light industrial, the zoning is light industrial, and we're not planning on changing that, we're continuing with the future land use as light industrial. There are some single-family residential properties, but for the most part, it's largely vacant. But when we were looking at this area, we were thinking, instead of breaking it out and having multiple research technology or things like that, is, is making something that's more of a large, large type of campus. So a large medical campus, a large technology campus. Indoor or outdoor recreation would be well-suited for this area. Close proximity to the interchange of Michigan Avenue and I-275. There's, these properties are really deep, so there's a significant buffer from 275, but certainly the, any noise mitigation, this would not be ideally suited for any residential properties being that close to 275 there. So trying to keep this as a, a large, large campus, a large conglomeration of an area. I'm sorry?
How much land is?
About 70 acres.
70?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just thinking about medical campus and all that sort of thing. The one thing we don't have in Canton, I know we're, I know it was talked about years ago and got shot down, was a level, what is it, a level one or two trauma center. I know Oak, back in the day when it was still Oakwood Hospital was trying to go here, but.
I think people are still having conversations about that.
Yes, I know, I know they are.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Use your mic, please.
It's a difficult thing to do right now because of the regulations. And then actually, the south, the hospitals don't want to build anymore, they don't have much cost. I've just looked into it. They'll do ambulatory services or surgery centers, but it seems to be, when you look at the market, it's very, very flat. Unless you're rural, sometimes they've been looking at that, developing that way, or just proving other facilities they have.
No, but we're, again, we're just looking at the zoning possibilities, if somebody wanted to come here and build it there, I mean, there's space for it.
Didn't they build the houses there, those, the smaller developments? Where the, the hospital was planned? Yeah.
Anything else for area number five?
This property is not owned by the township, right?
No, no, there's no Canton properties.
Individual owners, yes?
Yes, they're all, not all of them, some of them are owned, you know, a couple of properties are continuously owned by the same person, but it's, it's a variety of people, yeah. Anything else with area number five? And again, if you think of something later on that you'd like to discuss or an idea you have for any of these, you know, door, phone is always, always open.
There was, I think, a couple of years ago, an application for building a couple hotels on Cherry Hill, which was denied. We have hotels in this area.
I'm sorry, what did, what was denied?
Hotels.
Hotels, thank you, I'm sorry.
So this can be one of the uses, because there are already hotels in this area.
I'd have to look and see if there's any, if there's anything on Michigan Avenue, it might be motels, but I don't know. But if that's something of interest, we can, a high-end, try to lead it more towards a high-end type of motel.
But I think, but I, but I think for hotels to work, there has to be something else as, to work as a destination.
Yeah. Well, right now, yeah, I was gonna say, right now, right across the street, just north of the, the top, the northern red boundary line, we're reviewing plans for a Canton banquet center. So those two could go hand-in-hand where, you know, you go there for banquets and then right across the street is a nice luxury hotel for out-of-towners. So those two could, could, could work together, sure. Anything else? Okay. So now we're gonna talk a little bit about the mixed-use nodes. So again, these are intended to be neighborhood nodes designed as walkable areas with a mix of uses for residents to meet their daily needs. Connections to surrounding neighborhoods, focus on community-enriching uses, small-scale retail, restaurants, no big-box stores, nothing that's auto-centric. And the intent is for these types of uses to be part of the neighborhood and to be your, your local neighborhood stops, not to be regional destinations like we have on Ford Road. Okay. So just to give a little background, we have on the future land use map identified two different types of, of these neighborhood nodes. We have parcel nodes and we do have intersection nodes. So I'm just gonna go through these quickly for you. So for the parcel nodes, they are identified as parcel-specific. They may be one or more parcels might be included. For example, on this one here at South Lots, there are actually two parcels as part of this node design. We want to utilize these for mixed-use development or redevelopment opportunities. We, the areas that we looked at and have identified on the future land use map are in areas with stable environments, limited negative impacts that would happen if they were constructed, and adjacent to dense residential neighborhoods. So as you can see on this one, we have some high density right across the street, across lots, and then certainly to the east and to the southeast. So right around this area, there's a lot of residential patrons that could benefit from a small-scale neighborhood walkable node. This is the area of what it looks like currently. So you can just see that there is a drain that runs here along the east, but there are no wetlands on the property, there's no floodplain or anything like that. The drain would be something that would be considered, but it's not an impact. The intersection nodes that we've identified as a polygon on the, on the maps, these are general areas that may be suitable for development. So we would like to have a mixed use, but there are so many properties in the area or special considerations for the properties in general, that we didn't want to identify something as parcel-specific. So included in the text, we will note that any kind of mixed-use neighborhood node could be located within a thousand feet of, of an intersection. So it may not be right there at the, right there at the corner, it might be one or two parcels to the east-west, north-south, but certainly within that general area of an intersection and adjacent to the dense residential neighborhoods that we've mentioned before.
Can you give an example of where the, something like this would be?
Yeah.
I mean, I, what is that, what, what area is that?
This is Ford and Beck, right here.
Oh, okay.
Yep. You just get ahead of the story so many times.
I'm sorry.
I'm just so excited. This area is Ford and Beck. So I don't have to tell you the, the impacts of doing any kind of major construction here at this intersection. But just to draw your attention, we have the Fellows Creek and the drain to the south, or I'm sorry, two branches of Fellows Creek that meet there right at the star. So we have the creek impacts. This area on Ford and Beck is notorious for heavy traffic flows. So anything that would be constructed in this area would have to go through significant environmental, traffic calming constraints that, for that reason, we didn't want to be parcel-specific in this. We'd like to see something in this area, but knowing that this area needs a lot of investment and needs a lot of infrastructure improvements, we didn't want to restrict developers or property owners from utilizing the full, fullness of their property.
The, the old farm market, is that, is that whole parcel, is that, is that all there, is that?
There's a couple of parcels in there, so. There's one or two parcels to the south there.
Gotcha.
Or is it just one big one?
I live near there. I don't like this idea at all. I think that it's.
I'm sorry?
If we have to, I, I don't like this idea at all. I, I, I understand there'd be issues just getting it there. I just think it's asking for trouble. It's already, as you say, a crazy intersection. And, and trying to add in something where people are gonna be driving in and out. My, my sense is putting these neighborhood nodes in a calmer area, because aren't we saying that we want it to be places that neighbors would walk to? I don't think anybody in their right mind should cross that street.
Well, that's why, part of this, if there was anything to be developed there, we have had a lot of people ask about developing in this area.
I know, and I think it's a crazy idea.
So if anything were to be done, there would be, have to be significant traffic calming, infrastructure improvements, environmental constraints. So that's where we can say, we, we understand the limitations of these properties, and we also know that we do not want it to be a generic strip mall something. We want it to be focused on the neighborhood and the, the calming element so that it's not a regional destination incurring more vehicular traffic. It is something that would be developed for the residents in that area.
What is a calming traffic move?
Slowing things down, you know, looking at ways to move the traffic without impeding any kind of walking pedestrian network.
For years, they talked, for years, they talked about this in Dearborn, in West Dearborn, where Michigan Avenue went through, because West Dearborn was not, even though we had a lot of businesses on Michigan Avenue, what, Michigan Avenue wasn't pedestrian-friendly because traffic was so fast through there. I mean, it was, I think it was 40 miles an hour at the time, and heavy traffic, because you had all the Ford traffic.
So what did they do to?
So what did they do to calm it?
lowered the speed limit, and then they monkey, they've monkeyed around a couple different times with how you do the left-hand turn lanes, and they did phasing of traffic lights, which was a horrible experiment. And it's, it's still not the most pedestrian-friendly, but ultimately, the way it calmed down was because of the development that happened on Michigan Avenue later. I mean, Jacobson's was gone, and you developed, I'll call, I'll call it a shopping center, for lack of a better term, that you had, that you actually had to go in and park right there, I mean, it wasn't, so that you could walk with, and then walk to the businesses that were adjacent to it, that sort of thing. It's not a perfect situation, and as much, as, as much as similar to what you'd have here. And I have no doubt that ultimately, this is gonna get developed with something at some time. I don't know if it's gonna be in our lifetime or not, but, but, there's, as we've talked about many times, I think the toothpaste has been a lot of the tube here with Ford Road a lot of the time, and it's hard, it's hard to fix it now.
Well, but I think we could encourage, if somebody really wanted to develop something, to do it somewhere else.
But I, I, I think someone's gonna do something there. I mean, I don't think it's gonna sit vacant forever.
So what kind of entrust people have, I know the, the southwest property was sold a couple of years ago, and the southeast is on sale now. Are there people already approaching you guys for some?
Yeah, we've had a couple of inquiries. There's always people who want to put a gas station there, residential developments, senior housing, those types of things. Those are the ones that primarily have been coming to me. But, the, just to circle back, the, the neighborhood nodes and the map that you've all looked at many times, was provided for you as well, has identified this, this intersection as a potential node. Now, I, I chose this one because it has the most constraints of traffic and environmental issues that would need to be remediated before any kind of development came in. There are other areas on the southwest, specifically like Geddes and Barr, Geddes and Denton, that are on the calmer side, that wouldn't incur that kind of traffic or anything that you're talking about, still having environmental concerns. But I chose this one for our discussion point because it does have the most constraints of traffic and environmental impacts that would need to be looked at. Now, if, if you're not comfortable putting an intersection node at Ford and Beck, we, this is still draft mode, we can, we can take that off. But this was something that we identified to include here on the master plan, because if this area is to be developed, we wanted to say, on our future land use map, we have identified these areas as ripe for intersection nodes and mixed-use development, and this is what we would like to see in that area. So it gives us a little bit of control, or a little bit of area to facilitate a developer on what they're going to do, instead of something generic and boring.
I know we looked at a gas station for this, like a convenience store gas station several years back, and we said no. And I don't remember why we said no, but I also, is, is a gas station not really permitted on this corner?
On, I have included in, and we're, we're gonna get to these in a minute, but, looking at some of the land uses that we would want to see in these types of mixed-use nodes, and auto-centric uses are not something we would want. So no gas stations, no drive-throughs, nothing that is a quick in-and-out, get your stuff and go. These are intended to be, you come in, you sit, you enjoy the space, you walk around, you're part of the neighborhood, not, not get-and-go.
So, just correct me, if I'm wrong in my interpretation of, I know you won't. Intersection nodes are areas where you have to, you really have to give it more thought in terms of all that goes with it, as opposed to a neighborhood node where you're trying to fit something that's convenient in the neighborhood. Intersection's gonna, like you said, it's gonna require infrastructure changes or upgrades, or changing of traffic pattern, or something significant. It's not something that's gonna happen quickly.
And part of this, and this was gonna be the next part, is, is looking at the areas and intersections and the parcels that we want to, to promote and we want to see in the master plan. But also, what we're gonna start working on is some language, ordinance language related to these nodes, so that way, when the master plan is adopted, we already have the, the foundation and the regulatory component in place, so that way, we can say, yes, your, this intersection here has been identified as an intersection node, this is what this means, and this is how you can develop in those areas. So, those things will be working in tandem, and so that's part of the, the next few slides.
So as far as calming traffic, so to speak, and Alan and Gordon will probably chime in on this, but I know we're planning to have a first traffic circle in the county here in, next year, I think it is. Is there any thought to doing something like, like that intersection like this? I mean, there are, in Oakland County, Washaw County, there are traffic circles that's intersections that are this heavily traveled.
Yeah. I know that our engineering staff has been working with, with MDOT and with Wayne County about this intersection, because it is so problematic. But because of the creek there, it is really limiting on doing any kind of roundabout or, or things like that. So this, this area in particular, especially the bridge over Fellows, Mark and I had this whole long conversation about the bridge. But, having, doing any improvements in this area is gonna require a lot of coordination with, with regional agencies, and a lot of improvements are going to be needed. But if someone were to develop that southwest corner by including this in our master plan and saying this is what we want, we have a little bit of control or a little bit of sway as to what we want to see and how we can get improvements done along Ford Road and Beck for the rest of the residents in the area.
Can I just ask, you said no auto-centric?
Hmm.
But, I'm just thinking, if you had a charging station, EV, that isn't one that's in-and-out.
Mm-hmm.
You're like, you might be there thirty, forty-five minutes, right?
Well, these are gonna be areas that, there's going to be parking there, there's going to be parking available, it's not going to be exclusively for biking and walkability. But, so having, having an EV charging component to it would be something that we would want to see as part into the parking, but not having something that's so auto, auto-dominant.
Okay.
So what are the options, other than an intersection node?
Well, we have the, the parcel-specific nodes, those are the areas that we want to see these kinds of mixed-use types of developments.
Right, I mean, it sounds like you're, you want to have something there, so that when developers come in, you can say to them, you can only do this.
Mm-hmm.
Well, what less could we have them do? Like a park?
We're on the same wavelength, because you, you actually, I was thinking that whole thing right there, a park, open space.
Does it have to be some industrial, commercial thing?
No, it doesn't have to be, and certainly, part of the mixed-use language is to make sure that there's going to be open space, green space, those types of elements included in, in these types of developments. What we're trying to do is making sure, because these properties have, have been vacant for a long time, and there's still a lot of interest in Canton. So, if they are to be developed, we want to make sure that they are developed to something that's going to be helpful to the residents, that's going to better the community, and things that aren't going to be, create more havoc on traffic or on the environment. If they never get developed, and we have this in here and, and nobody wants to do it, then in five years, six years, we can, we can look at this again and say, is this something that has been beneficial? Has this hindered us? We don't know. Right now, we're trying to do, we're trying to do something new here in the community, so that way, if there is interest in creating more commercial opportunities further down west, further west on Ford Road, that it's not the continuation of the big-box stores, which we've heard from the public that they don't want in the community. So this allows some opportunities for those small, little things for people to get, without having to go into the, to the busyness of Ford Road or Michigan Avenue, if they don't want to.
To, to develop it as a park, though, it's probably likely that the township has to get control of the property.
I was gonna say, we don't own that land.
No, we don't own that land.
But I guess I'm trying to wonder, why are we saying we want to develop it? I thought one of the things we were saying is that we felt that Canton had been developed enough.
We can't stop anyone from developing property that they own.
I get that, but what can we, how, how, how more can we restrict it, I guess is what I'm asking.
We don't want to restrict it. I mean, that's part of the complaint we get about getting some people, other people to stay here and, and that sort of thing, is we don't, we, we won't. Canton notoriously, and Patrick, you correct me if I'm wrong, Canton notoriously has been viewed as a jurisdiction that's difficult to get things done, process-wise, and I'm not saying it's all to yours, Patrick, or anything like that.
It's really Aaron's fault.
Well, it's, it's, a lot of it's their former employer, but whatever, we won't have that discussion.
I disagree, compared to other places I've seen.
Well, I guess, I guess what I want to just talk about this node is that it feels as though you're, you're trying to say it has to be something.
No, we're not saying that, no, we're not saying that.
I mean, the factor of the matter is, Ford Road is going to continue to be developed westward, that's just a fact.
At some point or another.
At some point in time, it's gonna be developed. I think the question is, can we put stipulations so that it's something that we can live with that won't make things difficult for people in the area and for people that are driving through the area? It's going to be developed, it's not going to be a park.
Right, so what's the least amount of development we could ask them to do?
Low-density residential, or a park, like a park, like you said, and then, I don't know if you could control the entrances or, you don't want people going on to Ford Road, you'd take them down.
It's not going to be a park, you're not gonna take a major intersection on Ford Road and put a park there. No developer's gonna sign up on that.
And low-density resident, low-density residential is gonna be high-dollar. And we don't want more of that.
Well, we don't want more traffic.
That, the, the traffic is the constraint that I'm seeing, because in that particular area, that's why everyone was upset. And we sat there, when I used to drive my kids to All, All Saints, and I used to have to sit there all the time, oh my goodness.
All the more reason I don't want, I don't want to see residential on Ford Road, that was my gripe about doing the residential at Napier and Ford. I mean, I don't, I don't think residential, single-family residential is an appropriate use on Ford Road.
Well, it would be a less density for people going in and out, maybe like a senior housing or something like that.
I guess I'm not, but I'm not, I'm not a fan of low-density necessarily. I have no problem with it getting developed commercially, if that's what, if that's what the market dictates.
So Erin, I think I would have a better understanding of this, because I like pictures, you know how I love the pictures? Like, what are you talking about? What are you saying you think would be something here? When you say, oh, it'll be some sort of this, I need a picture. I tried to Google it, but my server's not working right now, apparently.
I just wanna, I'll get to the pictures in just a second. The other thing I want to note about these intersection nodes is that, if you look on the future land use map, the underlying future land use classification is not changing. So, it allows someone to come in and it gives, gives platitude, or gives an opportunity for a developer to rezone the property, or to look at these parcel nodes as a potential use in these areas. But it's not limiting them if they wanted to, because right now, it is, it is residential. So if they wanted to do a residential development, it doesn't hinder that. But, we're saying what we'd like to see in this area. If you're going to do, if you want to do commercial here, here's an opportunity to do commercial, but you have to do it the way we want you to do. You have to do it this way, it has to meet these, this criteria, this design aesthetic, it has to incorporate this much open space, all of those things. And we'll get into that language for the ordinance later. But, this allows us to really control what can be done and limit or allow as much density as we want, because it would, sensibly, it would have to be done through a PDD process.
And what we heard from a lot of the public participation, which is why we have it as a node, rather than coloring the, the whole parcel purple, like in some of the other cases, is that some of the residents who commented on the west side said that they wanted commercial development up to a point of something that was nearby, something that would generate, something that wouldn't generate a lot of traffic by itself, but would cover a lot of pass-through trips. So people driving through, they just want to get a loaf or bread, a gallon of milk, and they don't want to go much farther east. So for some of the folks that lived on the west side of the community and didn't want to drive to Cherry Hill Village, or drive to Ford and Canton Center, they wanted some commercial services, but we didn't want to wholesale change any parcels to commercial for that reason. We didn't want a big box, anything of a large scale. So, this was probably the most scaled-down version of a potential commercial that we could think of, where we don't color a specific parcel, but we indicate that it's a node area that would require further study, but nothing very site-specific.
That's where I think I have trouble, because it's not specific enough. But I understand that it needs to be vague, but I also feel like it, it needs to have some real control. It's a crazy intersection, and I understand you're saying all these slow things will happen. Well, we know what happens with Wayne County. They'll be like, oh gosh, yeah, that's a problem, well, sorry.
Like, the slowing down and like deceleration, well, I know that they're, we're already doing road construction on that.
Certainly, when, when we include this in the text, there's note here about requiring traffic studies and any number of things that we want to say, these areas could work, but they have to meet these, these criteria. And then, the language that gets more specific is the zoning ordinance component on exactly what we're going to do. But we confirm up the intersection node section to make sure that those are included in as well, as long as it's not, as long as it's not regulatory language, we can include it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I will just say, I think residential would be a disaster there, yeah.
But how would you get in and out of there for commercial on a regular time? I've, unless it's used off-hours or something, I don't know.
How do you get in and out of any shopping center on Ford Road now? I mean, you get...
This is worse because of that intersection, that it backs up both ways.
Okay, but what we're saying, what we're saying is, before anything could get developed there, there's a lot of engineering and planning that would have to go into redoing something with the intersection.
But just, but just like these developments, we're just passing on the problem again, just like these developments where we get this development way on the outside, it doesn't work with, with the traffic, and we're talking about traffic, which is our concern. And we're just compounding, building up these things, we got a bad A, bad B, bad C, if you don't fix the equation down the road, and you just look at the isolated piece, it doesn't work. So how do you, and I agree with you, how do you consider the overall? And I don't know how you consider the traffic on Ford Road.
Well, I, can I just...
Go ahead, Summer.
Make one point, that, I mean, we're, we're not talking about building this tomorrow.
That's right.
And there's plans in the, in the five-year roads plan to address this intersection within the next five years. I'm blanking right now on whether it's 2028 or 2027, but it is in there, and we just met on that, and I think those combination of things could make it better in that area.
And, and the thing is, this is a, and we've had this discussion with the public, when they confuse what the master plan is with what the zoning ordinance is. This is, this is just a conceptual thing. It's a, it's a nice, it's either a want-to-have or a nice-to-have thing. Just because we said that this should be developed as an intersection node, and others say that, doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Well, the big part is, is that what just Summer spoke of, the, the planning for 2008-29, when you plan things, you have to think about timing and finances, and you only could do so much to a, a short-term.
That's not our job.
And then long-term.
That's not our job.
You're forming, you're forming, yeah, a basic framework or stuff to go around, but it's hard for anybody to think of the basic framework, if you think logically, unless, unless we knew about, maybe we didn't, if we knew about the 2028 road plan and, and how less, you know, less volumes of traffic were gonna be there, then, you know, then maybe that would make sense. But right now, I, I understand what the thought is, and I remember sitting there, and I'm like, oh boy, this is horrible. And then I remember, the kid's mom said, oh, go down this other road. But anyhow, I had to go down this dirt road and all these bumps to avoid this place. And it still made sense, even though it was an irregular route. And sometimes I'd have to take this, but I, it was a nightmare every morning and picking them up.
I just looked, it's 2027.
That's not too bad.
One of the huge challenges for this intersection is those blue are Wayne County drains.
Mm-hmm.
And you can't just shut down a drain or reroute it easily. It's a deterrent for development.
Which is probably why this intersection has not been developed.
That's exactly right. And, not only that, Ford Road's an MDOT road, so you need their agreement on expanding that infrastructure, which you're hindered already. There's a lot of, a lot of obstacles for development here. And it's gonna get worse. I mean, we're approving residential left and right, even just down the road.
Yeah, so the future land use and the zoning map in this area is, is residential. So if someone came in tomorrow and said they've bought all of these properties and they want to do a development, they can, they can start to move forward with that. The, the intent here is to look at opportunities for commercial areas that would support the residential and serve as a mechanism to get some of these improvements done in this area. But, anything that goes on in this area is going to need a lot of study, and a lot of research, and a lot of infrastructure improvements. This isn't anything that's going to be built, built tomorrow. There's, there's too, there's too many, there's too many... There's, there's too, there's too many, there's too many unknown variables and there's too many problems with this intersection the way it currently exists today.
And one of the things that we've considered in the regulatory zoning text is possibly having a requirement that intersection nodes be PDDs. And that way, someone comes in with a conceptual PDD, if it's a no, they hear early before they spend a lot of time and money developing detailed engineering plans. And there's a little bit more leeway for negotiation, whether it's a definite benefit or open space or traffic improvements or whatever it is. So, it's a little bit of a softer way for an applicant to come in with a concept plan to see if it's something that would work.
So, what will it do to the prop, value of this property? The private owner who owns it, are we doing stuff which will devalue this property or increase its value?
Well, it's always hard to say. Sometimes people will look at what's proposed one way and think that it will add value, and others may look at it and think that it takes away value. It just depends on their point of view and what their vision of it was. If someone is looking at doing million-dollar homes and it was owned for something else, they might think it was devalued. Let's say it was owned for commercial, someone who wanting to build million-dollar homes might see it devalued or vice versa.
We have talked to a potential developer who owns, or who's working with an owner on the southeast side of Ford and back. There's a lot of really tiny, long strips of property down there. And they were looking at doing something else and they heard about this, and so we were talking with them. And they said that the, the owner, because of this, has increased the price dramatically on those properties. So, value versus...
Because of what, the planning effort?
Because, because of this, because the commercial development could be coming in into that area. A mixed-use, mixed-use development could be coming into that area.
People are specu, people are spec, starting to speculate.
And that may or may not come to fruition, but that's what they're, they're gambling on.
The, a, a normal one-acre prop, value of one-acre in Canton and these, these kind of areas is approximately 100,000-acre, I believe. But this southeast is about 12 acres, asking 2.2 million dollars. Asking $200,000 an acre, already asking double than the going rate in Canton.
And that's cool.
Yeah, it's only worth what somebody will pay you.
I do have some renderings here so we can kind of see some examples, and you've all seen these, this one before. Cherry, lots in Cherry Hill. This is the, the parcel-specific example that I showed to you earlier. So, as we look into these types of things, and certainly as we start talking about the zoning ordinance and the regulatory language, there's four things that were identified in the text that we want to make sure that we, we look at carefully. Land uses, the layout, the connectivity, and the, the overall design. So, as we look at the land uses, and they're circled here for, for your ease of reference and, and, so we want residential either on the second floor, third floor, above, nothing on the first floor facing the main streets, convenience, retail, some type of restaurants, those types of things. You've all, you've all seen this many, many times, so I don't want to go through and, and all of this, all of this stuff. But the idea would be that residential would be on the top, top floors, and then in, located in the rear of, of the property. So, they wouldn't be directly fronting at the main, main intersection. We look at the layout, certainly want to make sure that there's, there's tree-lined streets, things that are enhancing the, the area. We want to make sure that there is sufficient parking, but nothing that is immediately fronting on the main road. We want that to be located behind the, the predominant buildings. Oh, I skipped over land use, sorry. What we mentioned before, the auto-centric, we want to, we don't want to include those. So, nothing that would allow for gas stations, auto repair, drive-throughs, or car washes. Nothing big-box, so anything that's chain restaurants or any high, high-traffic uses would not be considered there. Yeah, okay. So, back to layout. The parking, making sure there's landscape buffers, making sure that the, the layout serves more than just the, the person who's driving in with their motor vehicle, but certainly the, the pedestrian and the bicyclist who are coming to the areas. Connectivity, we want to make sure that there's ease of access, not only from the main roadways, but also the pedestrian network. Closing any sidewalk gaps is, is a high priority in Canton, so we want to make sure that that continues. Access and connectivity from the convenience, retail to the residential, either above or located to the rear of the property. And it doesn't show on this example as well as the other one, but certainly if there's any opportunities for connecting to regional transit opportunities, we would, we would want to include those as well. And finally, the overall design, looking at facade improvements, any type of landscaping, the green space here in the center, making this an attractive, overall design an attractive space for people to come and visit and relax and enjoy. So, these are the, the types of things that we're including in, in, not only in the text to serve as the foundation of the ordinance language that will be developed as we go along here. So, just based on those four, four categories, and, and Patrick had noted that one thing we've considered is, is requiring anything that's developed as a mixed-use node to be a PDD. So, that would give us opportunity to look at the overall design of, of everything from a conceptual standpoint to the preliminary to the final. So, we'll have a lot of opportunities to look at this and make sure that it fits with what we're intending to do, and not only that, but making sure that any traffic or environmental constraints are addressed at the, at the very beginning. Not only for us, but certainly for the developers to make sure that they don't invest a lot of time, energy, and, and financial input into this when it won't, might not come to fruition. So, are there any questions, comments, discussions on the, this one? This is the last of the, the node discussion that I have. That, that brings us to the end of the mixed-use nodes. So, the other chapters that I had sent to you recently have to do with a chapter on the history of Canton. So, this follows the, the history as we understand it, from pre-settlement to the first peoples to forming as an official township, the early education system, how Canton came to be as a booming regional destination as it is today, not only residential but commercial, what it looks like today with approximately 100,000 people, and Canton tomorrow, why we're planning for the future. So, are there any questions, comments about that? This map will be included in the master plan because it's pretty awesome.
Why doesn't he show 275?
I'm sorry?
Why doesn't he show 275 on this?
Well, it is the, the timbered road.
Oh, okay.
That north-south on the, on the right there. There's another, there's another iteration of this map that shows the current roadway system. I'll send that all to you. But for purposes of discussion, showing the, the first existing conditions of the map, I included this one for you. So, it shows the historical ridge, and it shows the, the, the roads that were less-traveled and ones were highly worked, which became, you know, Michigan Avenue, 275, Cherry Hill, that type of thing.
What is territorial road? What does that know?
I'm sorry?
That, that looks like, is that Geddes?
Is that Geddes?
Looks like Geddes, yeah.
Territory, territory.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't do that. I like road little worked up at the top. Really interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like the map a lot.
Can you send us a bigger version of this?
Yeah, yeah. I'll send, I'll send you this one and I'll send you the other one tonight.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Was that in the...
Yes, I, I sent it all to you in the email, but I can send it to you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, you sent the, the history stuff on Friday.
Yes.
It was an email on Friday.
Okay, no, I'll send it, I'll send it all to you again. No problem. All right, were there any questions, comments, anything about this section that you'd like to go over in more detail or feel good? Okay. The next section we have is on natural features. So, here are a couple of maps that we'll also be including in the master plan. So, the Canton elevation relief map, excuse me, shows where the historical ridge is located. You can see the, the darker colors or the higher elevations. So, that ridge line there on the, cut diagonally on the northwest part of the township, and then you have the relief map there. So, relatively flat to, to the east and to the southeast, except for these relief areas, higher relief areas to the southeast, which are the current and former landfills. And then there's the waterways map on the left, which shows all of the, the creeks, the drains, the tributaries, and the Lower Rouge River. In addition to that, we include discussion on soils. The text that was included, or the text from the previous master plan had noted some soil profiles, and so we're just making sure that those are still accurate because Wayne County did an updated soil survey in 2019. So, we want to make sure that that's, that's accurate. So, those, it's highlighted here in yellow. Those will be included in a future iteration, but I wanted to get this in front of you just so you had some text to review.
Mainly clay, right?
Mainly clay. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of clays.
I know, I know, I know my yard, I know my yard is.
There is some, there is some more fertile areas, but yeah, we're a predominantly clay, clay community. That's all just noted here. And then, discussion on the floodplains and wetlands and why they're important and why they need to be protected and preserved, as well as the woodlands, trees, and vegetation in the area. This section is really just to showcase what we have. The intent of this text is not to provide any language specific to how we're going to preserve the floodplains and wetlands. That will come later in a, in a different section. This is just to provide some context on where the, these areas are located and why they're important in preserving in our, in our community and for our ecosystems. If it seems a little sparse on that front, that's why. Okay, any questions or concerns about these? Yes?
Yeah, she responded. She replied also that, and it's got a bunch of attachments.
You didn't get that?
Came out Friday.
Who, who? I didn't get any kickback emails, so, okay.
Last thing I got prepared was the...
Friday.
No, I sent it Fri, yeah, Friday, yeah.
Patrick's came out Thursday.
Okay, okay, so...
Open up the planning commission meeting.
No, it wasn't attached to Patrick's. I just replied, replied all.
It's not, it's not, you know, you can see it all.
Okay. Yeah, but nothing kicked back? Yeah, normally, something would kick back, but it didn't. Okay, just for my own, who, who didn't get it? So, I can send them right back to you. One, two, okay. You didn't get it either?
When did you...
Friday afternoon, about 4:30. Okay. I didn't get any, any kickback emails, so for, it seemed like everything went through.
I got it in both emails, just for the record.
Okay, I, I promise I didn't kick anybody off the, the email list.
No, it shows you.
So, I will send those all out to you.
I gotta check my Canton email.
I do send them to both just for that purpose, yeah, I do.
Actually, oh, yeah.
Yours is cruiseajc@aul.com.
But it was sent to my Comcast one because she saw it on there, but it...
Okay, all right. I will send those either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. So, if you don't get them, you know, by noon or something, send me an email, send me, give me a call, let me know, and, but I'll get those over to you. So, I apologize. So, unfortunately, we're not able to have full in-depth conversations about some of the text, but please read it and if you have any further questions or edits, you can email me on, on that. Okay, so is there anything else related to the natural features section that we'd like to discuss? Okay. Last one here is just a little section providing context on the current and, current Canton plans and certainly the regional and state plans, planning efforts that have been done. We aren't going to be stating every single thing that Canton has been doing, the DDA plan, the Parks and Rec plan, or any of the Department of Public Works plans that, that they use. We're updating our comprehensive land use plan. But we want to make sure that any of their goals, their objectives, any of their findings are incorporated into our master plan to make sure that we, as a township, are all moving in the same, same direction. Now, we look at the regional and state plans as well because if there's opportunities to incorporate some of the initiatives that the state or the county has put forward, then we know that we're on the right path. And if there's, like I said, if there's opportunities for grant funding or partnerships with those governments or those agencies, that we've got that covered as well. So, these are just provided as a little bit of background information as to what these plans are and what they convey. They will be looked at and summarized as applicable in the section. So, for example, the Michigan Climate Healthy Plan will be, could be referenced in the sustainability section. The statewide housing plan would be referenced in the housing and neighborhood section as, as applicable. But this is just to give you an idea of, of the efforts that are going on, not only within Canton, but around the region and around the state that we need to be aware So, with that, we got done a little bit earlier than expected. Are there any questions or concerns? I know that, I apologize again that you all didn't, didn't get the... Oh, okay, all right. But you two say your Canton emails have not worked.
What, what happened?
Okay.
What happened is we had it set up and then you changed the domain. That just messed me all up. I've never been straight since then.
Okay, well, we need to get that .gov email address working just so this, this kind of thing doesn't happen. So, what we'll, what I'll do is I'll contact each one of you individually tomorrow to try to figure out what's, what's going on and what the issue is, and we can work with IT to get those, those worked out. But I will also send you the materials again to your personal and your Canton email so you, so you at least have that while we work out those IT kinks.
My email is not working also since then, but do we have to stop here to get this worked or it can be done remotely? Because I believe we had some email exchanges that IT has to do something for the email to work.
They can do it remotely.
Yeah.
Our, our help desk, appointed officials sometimes work with our help desk. So, if there are any issues that you have with logging on, let us know. We can put you in touch with our IT help desk.
Are there any other questions or, or thoughts related to the draft text, the ideas, the concepts that we've been discussing tonight? Thank you. There will be more stuff coming to you in the future, so there's going to be more, more things to talk about on July 1st.
I am advocating motions to adjourn. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.